All right, welcome everybody to the Select Board Meeting. It is Monday, October 2nd at 6:33. We'll start the meeting as we usually do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always feel like I want to say "yeah".
All right, that goes on to Gold Call, and that's myself, David Boye, Chair of the Select Board.
Marla Herrich.
Norma Deeply.
And that moves us to announcements. I think I had one that I can't for the life of me remember.
Supervisors.
However, also, a note that it is going to be the last chance to change your party affiliation or set it back to independent for voting at the primaries. And that's going to be with the supervisors, the checklist meeting on Friday, the 6th, so this Friday at 7:30 in the conference room downstairs. So if you need to adjust that or set it back to being independent, that is the last chance to do that before the primary. Do we have any other announcements?
I do. Next Monday, Columbus Day, our office will be closed for the day. However, the town clerk will be open that day. Monday, the 9th.
Well, good.
Awesome.
All right.
So it makes her look good, not so much.
14th of October, the church is having chicken barbecue at our fire station drive-through setup like we do in the middle of the summer, if anybody's interested.
Tickets are available at Town Hall?
Oh, good.
Awesome.
I saw on the 14th, you said, Emma?
The four- the fourteen, yeah.
Sweet. All right, any further announcements? All right, that moves us on to appointments. And so Chris Chesley, towing, come on down. Come on down.
What do I do? Sit, stand?
Have a seat already.
Have a seat.
Yeah, this isn't the Price is Right.
I made it this time.
If we had the giant, you know, hall filled, we'd have out the microphones for you.
Wow. So, do I go over what I went over last time?
I think we basically have the overview covered. And Chief, why don't you come on up as well?
Hello, how you doing?
You're next, anyway.
I meant to say hi earlier.
You did, outside.
More or less, let's talk about phone here.
So, let me try to summarize at the, you know, thousand-foot level where we are. You want to be on the towing list, you're not on the towing list because you are registered as a business in town, but you're- you do your primary business out of another auto yard in Warner.
Right, out of storage in Warner.
And so that's kind of where that is. There was the letter that was sent to you, and so I guess I'll let you start by letting me respond to that.
Actually, I didn't see the letter. I probably- it probably got put on my desk and I didn't see it.
Okay. Do you have a-
Yeah.
Perfect copy?
Nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that was dated September 5th, so shortly after we had had our discussion in August. And I'll let you read through it first.
So what's it gonna take to get the special exception?
I can't say specifically how that will go because that would be a ZBA hearing.
So I have to apply for zoning board and pay the fees and all that stuff? Is there fees for that?
Yes, there are. It's $250 for the application, $10 for each abutter.
So is it just the heating departments? Okay. So is it just the zoning board or do I have to go through another board?
So it's the zoning board and then if you do both applications at the same time, you don't have to pay the 250 or the abutters a second time because we'll send all the notices out at the same time.
Okay.
So we'll do it all in one application and all the abutter notices at the same time.
Okay, so now the last time I went through this and we came up with this, according to the zoning board and everything else, they then wanted a, basically a, they said it could be drawn-out map of setbacks and property and everything and what I was doing. Do I have to do that again? I'm doing nothing that different than what I do now. I parked the truck in front of the building.
So they would needs- there is an application requirement that they are gonna need a site plan, but it can be hand-drawn, it doesn't have to be anything done.
I did that last time, you told me it wasn't good enough.
Yeah. I can't speak for the board because I'm not-
Okay, it was a different board.
And the board changes.
And the board changes, so I- I mean, I can help you with your application if you wanna give me a sample and then show it to me and then I'll see, you know, take a look at it and then we can work through it, and that's an option.
Yeah, yeah, well, okay. I'll go through something with that. Yeah, because last time it was, basically the way I understood it last time, I might as well have the whole property survey. And I wasn't gonna survey the property at that point.
I don't think the zoning board, at least in my memory, has ever required a survey.
No, they didn't say a survey, but they wanted to know how far back did was, what was my frontage, what was my side, what was the dimensions? How far back is this corner of the house? How far back is this corner of the house? How far back is this corner of the shed? And where are you parking them? And what was the square footage of that area? Basically, this is the way I understood the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, I could help you get maps and stuff like that, measurements.
Did you say you supplied one already?
I came in one time with one in my hand to do it and they said it wasn't good enough.
At one of the previous meetings we had-
Oh, okay, sorry.
That wasn't with you, this existing board, this was probably-
Years ago?
Probably 2016, 17, probably 2017.
Few years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so I just sort of gave up on it at that point.
As a point to help you, tax maps aren't perfect, but that will give you all of your frontage for sure.
Right.
And-
ID gives me frontage too.
The use of something like an overhead, if it's clear for everything that you want and not like two-tree covered for a shed or something, if it's clear, just an overhead shot from Google Maps, and they have a measurement tool right on Google Maps.
Really?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's not perfect, but it will, it will get you really close, they'll probably be okay or ask like, can you clarify this one or two measurements?
Right, we can do that with our GIS software at the Town Hall.
Actually, now that you say that, I have a, somebody just showed me, I wasn't thinking about it, but they have an app out there that they pay a monthly fee on for hunting.
Yep.
Where it, you can put, drop a pin and say, how close am I to somebody's house? And it'll give you the footages. Yeah, so I could do something with that too, I guess.
Yep.
If I can get it to print out, so.
You should be able to take screenshots on the phone and then print the screenshots at some, either by sending them straight from a phone or from a computer or, or just email them. And Russ can get those printed for you.
So, what requirements do you have that I have to abide by?
You abide by theirs and you're good with us.
Okay.
Would love to have somebody in town, it'd make it a lot quicker.
I know.
Especially, you know, bad weather, I think.
That's cool.
We have no problem with that at all. Get the, the stuff straightened out with the zoning board and we're good.
Okay.
We're easy that way.
What is the next meeting? Did you have something, Emma?
I just, we're doing a lot with battery-operated cars and we're not having real good luck with them and working with the Fire Marshal and there's a big thing going on United Stateswide on them battery-operated cars and a lot of updates and a lot of stuff. And they gonna be sitting around down there or-
No, I don't use my house for storage.
Okay, all right, cool.
No, I don't. I have, I have, so Ajax Auto in Warner, off exit 9.
Yeah.
They're already approved as a tow yard by the town of Warner.
Cool.
And I have a deal with him, I have a chain link compound up there. That's where, that's where my toes go to. Yeah, so right now, if it comes to the point where I want to expand into the, down here, I'll let the board know. Actually, no, I'll bring it up ahead of time. See what, see what, I'm gonna bring it up when I come before zoning, see what they require, what they need to or whatever, because if I'm going to do it, why do it twice?
Right.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Right, so I'll do that. And the actually, New Hampshire Tow Association puts on classes now for the towers. I missed this last one because I was already committed elsewhere, but they'll have a, a year in there specifically addressing EVs now. Because with the lithium batteries, they are a big hazard.
Yeah.
I don't think Tesla's so much the hazard as the other ones. They're getting too many Chinese batteries in the other ones.
Okay, no, I thought, I was just, I was just curious on the, the all ahead.
Well, I got a question for you, because of the fire department. If you have solar panels on your roof, does that affect how you treat a house when you fight, when you go to a fire? So, so what is, what is, what do you have to do when they have solar panels on the roof?
What do you have to do?
Yeah, if somebody has solar panels, you come in spraying with a hose, what do you do?
You can spray them with a hose, you've just gotta make sure, you've just gotta know what the disconnects are because some of them, every, every solar panel's different. Some shut down, some of them will make energy when the red lights are flashing.
Right.
And there's a lot. And then, if they're installed right, they're supposed to leave you so much room from the peak down and up the sides and all that, a lot of them are right, some of them aren't. And we've just gotta do the best we can with what we have and they're deadly if you breathe them, so you have to try to stay upwind because most of the time we pump operator doesn't have breathing access on.
I've actually heard from, from somebody with, my niece used to do insurance, she said, some fire departments are just saying, let them burn and not touching the house because of solar panels on them.
Really? I will clarify, as someone that's highly into the solar field as far as knowledge and, and learning, there are several things in the National Fire Codes, International Fire Codes, and some in the building codes as well as electrical codes. All of those things need to be followed. And if they're all followed, then they can go in and follow as the fire department, follow standard operating procedure of, you know, shut, shut the power off to the place and there should be a switch either right next to it or it needs to be automatic, and then the entire system powers down so that there's nothing. Older systems did not have that requirement. They also have requirements for being able to allow access up and around roofs on residences, et cetera. So all of that's actually covered in current regulations and codes.
Okay.
But it wasn't, say, 10 years ago.
Yeah, because I was, they were saying that if it starts burning, because, like Emma says, even a flashlight shining on it or the lights from the strobes will, will create a current through the panel itself, but it's just transferring the current from the panel to the house whether it disconnected.
Since, I may be wrong on this, but it's either 2017 or 2019, anything after that point, it had to do, anything newly installed after that point, had to shut down individually at a panel level so that things weren't being passed between panels or to the rest of the house.
Okay.
So basically, all you have is the single panel you're touching at that point if you need to do anything.
All right.
Yeah, they've come a long way since the very beginning.
So, anyway.
Because I was considering the panels.
As long as they do it right, everything is awesome. If they don't, then everything's horrible.
It's not life, I was gonna say.
So one other question for you in regards to that then. Solar panels, can you put them up to the, the property line or do you still have to the 50-foot setback?
I, you'd have to actually ask the planning board or Russ, but I believe they would be considered a structure, so they would have setback requirements.
Yeah, okay. So I guess my next question is going to be, when is the next zoning board then?
So the zoning board doesn't meet until they have an application in front of them.
Okay, so fill out the application and-
So, once we get the application set up and all ready to go, then we'll put it in.
Okay.
And then I can get you a list of the deadlines, too.
So, I can visit you tomorrow, maybe busy, maybe not, but you'll be in Monday through Friday generally?
Yeah, I'm here, we're open to the public Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, but I'm here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If you just give a call ahead, then I'll let you in, all right?
Okay, well, the schedule tomorrow, I'll plan on Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll go from there. Do you need anything else from me?
I don't think so.
All right.
Should we have a motion to table this enforcement until we hear back from ZBN or not really required?
Well, I don't think so, do you?
Yeah, it's in process.
Yeah, I don't.
Sounds good.
Okay, so my next step is zoning.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good week then.
You too.
Thanks.
Well, you might as well stay there.
Stay, we'll jump right in.
Our next appointment is John Pearson, who is not here, so department heads, come on down. We got three of them this time.
They can do a dance. Lloyd can't do a dance. He's out of commission.
I'm just moving slow.
Who wants to go first?
Go ahead, Chief. So, my budget, as of 9:28, I have $201,538.5 and 56 cents left on my 23 budget, which was 306,251. So I still have 35% remaining. September 1st to September 30th, we have 30 motor vehicle stops, three summonses, $217 in fine. Didn't have a ton of patrol hours because of that, but we have more patrol guys working right now, thank God. One arrest, multiple felonies, and a lot of misdemeanor charges. 61 calls for services, and it's the typical calls. Department information received, mental health issues, we have a couple of those, motor vehicle complaints, OHRA complaints, pistol permits, residential burglary alarms, road hazards, we had a lot of those with all the wind and rain. Suspicious activity reported, sex offender registry, subpoenas served, new house, two new vacancy house checks, just other agencies and animal complaints. We had a missing person that we found, thank God. Assist citizens, assist fire department, and basically none other, some other nondescript complaints, we'll just keep coming in asking questions. We did our in-service firearms arms training the other day, and we're doing background checks right now on two applicants, one for full-time and one for part-time, so hopefully we can come up with something. I hope.
That's great.
But before I complete everything, I gotta jump right into this. I contacted a company, Ral services, to come over and give us an estimate for digging a trench from the road where the sign's gonna go to the building and putting up the side of the building, in the building and across to the power station inside the station so we can have power down there. I cannot find anybody else that will come and give us an estimate on it. I've contacted 30 different electrical companies and I haven't had anybody to say they'll come out other than these guys. It's a whopping $27,000, $445. So, if we were to put a meter there, now, we've got a price of $31 a meter, but Dana got a price of $41 a month for a meter. That's gonna take 55 and 3/4 years to make up that $27,000. That makes no sense because the sign's not gonna be there for 55 years. It's gonna be cheaper for us to put a meter there by far. I mean, 55 years, it won't be there, the sign won't be there, none of us will be there in 55 years. Well, you may still be. I know I won't be here in 55 years.
Me neither.
The cost savings to us is, I don't know where we're gonna come up with $27,500 bucks. I don't, I don't have it in my budget, that's for sure. And I don't know any budget in town that we can just rub.
The previous sign didn't even have a light on it, right?
It did not. We would really like to get that sign up, the town paid a lot of money for that sign, you guys put a lot of hours into it, we certainly did. We'd like to get the sign up, and we can have the sign up and running fairly quickly if we can just put a meter right there at the pole. I mean, it just, I think the cost savings to the town is gonna be immensely, yeah, it's $41 bucks a month or $31 a month.
But what we're making off of our solar panel, these guys got that all figured up, so now it's showing that we're proffing it off, and I mean, it's, it's-
Plus, I think, I think we'll make that much money because there's people that wanna rent spaces on it, you know, for birthday, they wanna announce a birthday.
Well, that's a, that's a good idea.
Or they wanna announce a yard sale.
That's a good idea.
You know, wanting to add all the fee.
Are you gonna turn that into a full-time secretary job?
Hey, if, we can make some money off of it.
Yeah.
See, it'll go towards something.
Speaking of the, of the secretary stuff, I know that you had gotten the new secretary and that there was crossover training going on and, and then some special projects, has all of that kind of finished out?
Michelle has been helping her with stuff that Phil and I cannot do, that Michelle I was doing in the computer. So she's been trying to train her into that. But she's, Michelle is working, I think she's worked like one day a month to help fill that in. And Lisa's working less hours than Michelle at less money, so, I mean, I still got, I don't know if I brought my budget.
So when are we expected to have just the, just the new secretary?
Oh, by, by the end of the year. I think everything will be all squared away. Yeah, I still got $10,000 in that budget line, I mean, because Lisa doesn't work as many hours.
All right.
So, I mean, I still got-
And that's enough hours to cover everything.
Enough hours because between Phil and I doing it, we can fill in and do the stuff that we need. And we've eliminated some of the stuff that Michelle used to do when we're doing it. And, and we're fine with that. Sometimes I like doing my own stuff anyway. But I mean, I still got 56% of her pay left, we're gonna have to turn a lot of that back in, which will make it easier for us, I think. So it'll work out.
All right.
So. Thank you. Meter?
So, meter, would that be a great thing to do for a meter down there? I know you wanna cut across that pavement and put that in the building, but we're gonna-
It's the whole, like, this is the payment forever thing that gets me, but, you know, when you, when you look at dollars and cents, you have to look at dollars and cents.
And that's what I'm looking at, is what, what's it gonna cost us in the overall?
The other thing I wonder is if we can get anything from the government or anything for doing something like this. I don't know. They always come up with crazy stuff, who knows what they're coming up with tomorrow?
Well, part of this came out of the ARPA stuff.
Okay.
So, or I should say, all of the sign costs came out of that.
All the sign came out of the ARPA stuff, so that was good.
So that's not a bad-
So we did do that.
That's what I was gonna say. So that's not really, $40 a month, which, I mean, I think it's worth it personally, so. And like you said, if you're gonna sell, sell space for somebody having a yard sale or-
Everybody wants to put things on the yard sale.
Public suppers or whatever.
I know this-
That would definitely take some good policies and process before we would do it.
Oh, absolutely. But, like, you have the guy on top of Willow Hill in Franklin, he does, if you want, you wanna put your wife's birthday on it, and it runs to that day, you know? So everybody wishes her a happy birthday.
In this cash only.
Check me out for the town.
But, but this can probably be done now by a meter before the snow flies.
Yeah, right.
Whereas the other- Before the snow flies, it can be done before then.
The other, forget it.
I think it'll, I think in a way it'll pay, we'll be making money on it.
Yeah.
We also could, next April, when I fill out the latest 909, .09 for the PUC, I could apportion a little bit of what's made to that account. Right now, one of the arrays is going completely to the public safety building, and I don't really think you'd need it per se 100% because you're, you're going, we don't, haven't had the winter yet, but-
Yeah.
But right now, you're going, so we could change that. But that's only a one-year, once-a-year thing you can do.
But, yeah, so hopefully we, it doesn't really matter whether it gets to one versus the other because it's monetary credit that gets applied to bills, so whether it's one bill versus multiple doesn't really affect the town much.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking of, that we do have to pay, we have to pay for the meters at the array itself, which is 41, 32 each, and if this meter is at the same rate, and whatever little electricity it uses, which I don't imagine would be much.
It's, it's not gonna be as much as the cost of the meter.
You know, oh, I, no, I'm not sure.
Now, Phil called them and they told him 31. I don't know if it's different for what the use is, but they had told him 31 because he said the only one have is 220 amp services there.
Well, I won't get in an argument over $10 with you, but whatever it is.
Let's hope it's, I hope it's 31.
Do we need to make a motion or anything? That's what I was gonna ask. Should we make a motion?
Do we need a motion or just go ahead and install the sign?
I think you could just say, go ahead and install the sign.
And the meter.
Thank you, Lloyd.
I wanted to make-
And a very long extension for it.
Yeah, long extension for it.
For the neighbors' lawn.
Good, and I-
My, my question on that is, with the new driveway cut and moving a pole possibility, would any of this get touched when they do that?
No, we, Phil and Steve and I, the day the guy came out from the state, they were all involved there with me, and we looked everything over. The only thing we have to do to put the new driveway in is the gentleman across the street that's got the mailbox on our property, we've gotta set that up the street, what, 30 feet?
Yeah. Actually, we, we talked about moving it into our driveway behind the guardrail.
No, there's another one right there, not ours.
Okay.
We talked about putting ours and then the other gentleman across the street in our driveway, but there's one that's on a granite post-
Yep.
Down right where the driveway's going, correct?
Yep, yep.
Because that driveway's gotta be, what, 56, almost 60 feet wide.
Wide because of the trucks, that's what they want.
Well, probably the mailman would like it if he had three mailboxes together.
Although we have three together.
Yeah, right.
We'll get them off the road because how many times does the state wipe them out?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, three times last year alone.
Yeah.
So.
You guys wipe it out. I have faith.
Okay.
We'll take care of that one.
I just wouldn't wanna have to, like, have it all go in and then, yeah, we're moving poles, so it's gonna help people.
No, no, no califull, no.
Okay, awesome.
We moved everything down so that wouldn't have been in to get away from the wetlands and the pole.
Sweet.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Who wants to go next?
Okay, so we'll go firehouse. We're 169 calls to date, hit four calls yesterday, a CO problem with wood stove ash, two medical calls in a UTV accident under the power lines with a trauma alert. So, fishing game, state police came out, worked with us. So, that was, that was a little bit what we did yesterday. So, the ambulance last month, we had 17, 18, 22 calls last month, but there was like five times the ambulance didn't get out during the day. One of the EMTs been sick, and the other one that's goes quite a bit and does a lot was out of town for the week. But the, with the contract with Hoptekin, the people got taken care of and, and everything was good. So if anybody comes back and asks why the ambulance didn't get there, we have Tookie for backup. Just figured I'd let you folks know.
Thank you.
Things should get back on track a little bit, but the day of the volunteers are-
Windling.
On their way out, and I talked to some other people, we had a capital area meeting last Thursday night, and there's a lot of towns that are in a lot worse shape than we are. Bioys in EMS, the surrounding towns are bailing them out, and that's what we do for each other. So it's just a sad situation. uh it's just a sad situation. This actually is not new. I I saw it coming in the eighties. One of the premium rescue squads in New Hampshire was Henneka Rescue. And they're volunteers. They were able to go during the day and everything. A lot of them worked in town. Well, the calls started picking up and I saw it start to go down. You as a owner of a company, you told me as a volunteer, okay, you can go three times this month. I'll cover you for three times. You you pick your calls. That's it. If the call lasts five minutes, it lasts five minutes. If it lasts the whole day, it's the whole day. Then it finally got to the point where, sorry, I can't cover the calls anymore. So in the eighties, it started going. If you've received the monitor or you get it online, there was a story, I believe, in today's paper about the volunteers. They were talking about it over and loud and everything. It is going down. The state is trying to get more people in, involved and so forth. They have programs. But it's time-consuming. It's very time-consuming. So, you know, he's, the chief is caught. Let's put it that way.
I I would actually argue that that's been not even just like fire or anything, but just general volunteerism. We see it for boards and stuff in town as well. Uh but Webster has continually surpassed and been far above most for eh municipal involvement, including with fire. And and I would say that a lot of that has to do with how the department gets run and and the way that it's led. Uh and the way that we as a town try to support them. So hopefully we can continue that.
And we have the best of the best. I mean, you start riding around some other places and you go up north, up into Maine and stuff. I mean, them guys and ladies do what they have to do with, but I mean, we've we've got some real nice stuff, but the you can you can have all brand-new stuff, but if you don't have a body to put that stuff in and a body to put in the seat, it's.
It's worthless.
We had a call the other night to the county home, smoke in the building. Um we're on automatic for all the calls in Bosquen along with Salisbury, Franklin, Concord. And I mean, there was people, it was the right time of night and it was a fire call and there was people that, the truck was full. There was people that got left behind, which is fine too, because if we have a call in town or they need another truck. But um during the day, I mean, if the right people are around, you can make it happen. But I mean, the day that you got to that building fire first, I mean, we did, we had, we had three, but that was the, that was a holiday weekend.
It was a holiday weekend.
Fourth, the third of July, the third of July, but that's why we have the mutual aid system all set up and um the surrounding towns and and um we just work together and and do the best we can. But um yeah, so we've been doing our Wednesday night things um at the firehouse. Um the trucks have all been inspected. The ambulance is over there right now. I took that over this morning at six thirty and Phil picked me up with a cruiser and brought me back. So if somebody saw me in the cruiser today on the passenger side, I was in the car, weren't in the back in handcuffs. But um so engine three, that's a two thousand four. Um we had to do a brake job on the back, brakes and drums, uh battery strap, hold downs and um there was a couple of the minor things. And then while they were there last year, I didn't do the oil changes in the service because they don't get any miles, but I did it the year before and they did it this year. So um they're all oiled up. Um October is um pump check, pump test month. Um so Perkins Pump, they'll be out. That takes about a day. One of brings their trucks over and at the same time um when we do ours in truck or treat. We asked the other night at the meeting and we didn't seem to get a lot of interest in help and volunteers to do that. So um I would probably say that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
I did call somebody about that and they said.
No, Phil called me.
Put it on the front page.
No, Phil, Phil called me and asked me what.
It's too bad, but.
Well, it is, but you have to have the people.
Yeah, right.
At the firehouse and and you you can't get them to go to a medical call because life is busy. And you have to be gentle with the volunteer. It's not like me working for Steve and it's like, hey, you didn't show up today, you get spanked. Volunteers do what they can, when they can, but um.
Um so I will mention that uh Hillsbury Lake was looking at doing trunk or treat. And I had told them that they should contact you guys to coordinate if that was happening. So uh hopefully they'll still be able to get something going. So everyone will be able to go and enjoy something in town.
And then October is fire safety month and um there's three or four of us that will take a day and talk to the school over there and set up a date to go into the school for a three, four hours for um fire prevention. We'll make that happen one way or another. The last few years, last year was busy like and then COVID and deep, so we haven't done it for a day or two there. So um we are looking forward to doing that. Any questions at the firehouse?
I know you had said that the uh we actually had a chassis and stuff for the new fire truck, but have they changed any of the status yet?
I I haven't, I haven't heard anything and I haven't called Craig, uh Chris.
Oh, that's fine.
No, I haven't. He's a busy, busy man. Chris Champagne for E one.
Yeah.
He said it was gonna be built on the fifth of last month of of start the process. Um so I need to reach out to him. On that, so. So highways and roads, Pleasant Street's been paved approximately four thousand feet. Um the White Plains Road, I think we talked about that the other day, but if we didn't, the White Plains Bridge is done up. I've gotta do a little shoulder work over there before it gets cold. Um Friday, we put the base down on the fourteen hundred feet on Roby Road before it started raining. We're supposed to do it Monday and then it didn't happen Monday and then they said it was gonna happen Tuesday and then they didn't know when it was gonna happen. So it was kinda like, okay, so then they just showed up and it happened and.
Nice, cuz, yeah. And he and Emmett tries to make sure everybody's kinda notified, but we all know how that works.
And so.
Like everybody else's schedule.
Base came out real good and then this morning we talked it. And so Monday, Russell will go to Chapel Tractor Sunday afternoon with a trailer truck to bring the shoulder machine back that we rent. And Monday, we'll get the shoulders out to hold the edges. Um that will take two, three days. So um the fuzzy, fuzzy brothers um finished up crushing at the pit a week ago Thursday. They crushed me up four thousand yards. There's probably still a thousand yards to crush. I didn't wanna overdo it. Um six bucks a yard, so twenty-six thousand, twenty-four thousand. And if we would've bought all that material in Bosquen and hauled it back up there, it would've been a hundred, it would've been a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the same pile we had made for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, for a hu- uh for twenty-six thousand dollars, I'm sorry. So um that was quite a saving.
Thank you.
For bringing that up for the.
Huge.
For the town. So it's a big part of what we do and Roy sees it because the trucks go by his house. They can go by his house, but a lot of folks in town have no idea we do that. Um. They just ask, what's the noise?
Yeah.
They wonder if someone's drilling, you know, an oil well or something.
What's that noise?
So uh we've been working down on Pleasant Street on the dirt part. Um.
Got a few trees.
Looks real good.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gonna be hat-tot from dang its corner up to the.
No, it's not. Your neighbor said if you, if I, if Clay, is it Clay?
Yeah.
He said if I, he said he, I got another thing coming.
He kill ya.
Well, he pretty much said that.
Yeah, I know.
Though though I do know that there are uh or at least were several folks that were a little further up Pleasant that do actually want it paved. So.
But.
Eventually, yeah, so the discussion will be had, I'm sure.
Well, there's a lot more that's gonna gonna spend some more money up through there before you get that far, but.
That'll be a discussion later.
Yeah.
How much does it cost to pave road, like so many dollars a fo- foot or something like roughly?
Well, we just did fourteen, we just did fourteen hundred feet. Well, we got the bill for, I did twenty-five hundred feet of new road and we overlaid a little bit that was good on each end. So there's four thousand feet of tar. So that was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and change. The top.
That's the Pleasant.
Yeah, the Pleasant Street, yeah. It looks good though. It's really good.
Um let's see, Pleasant Street.
I'm gonna guess two to three times that length. Prob- probably about two and a half.
What's that, buddy?
How long the dirt section is?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about what today, today.
Oh.
Today on Roby Road, we put out three hundred and twenty-two ton. Just the top today was uh twenty-six thousand, you might as well say twenty-seven thousand. And then the binder, the binder was is probably is gonna be forty. So you got sixty-six thousand dollars in fourteen hundred feet of tar.
Wow.
Over quarter mile.
And the thing that he's not really touching on is that's only tar to go over the top of what's already a good, appropriate road base.
Right, or a road base that we built.
For example, the dirt portion of Pleasant, well, it's a pretty good red base as far as a dirt road.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a good road base for tar.
But, right, it is, but Pleasant Street on the dirt part, you just see all them rocks that we took out of just out of the ditch and they'll all go back to the pit and be crushed. Not this year, but uh another time. But there's a lot of rocks in the middle of that road. So if you did pave it, it'd heave within three, four years.
Jeez.
So it would be significant work.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not, nothing simple.
Just the work.
Even with roads, dirt roads. But but Pleasant Street really looks nice.
And it will once we get the shoulder out. It will make quite a difference.
Yep. Doing a good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So um yeah, I gotta get my roads graded up, but actually, like Clough and Sandman, we gravelled that this spring. Um that stayed well all summer. That's not gonna take a whole lot to put to bed for the winter and um in Roby Road. So um but in the win- in the fall, in the spring, I like to crown them up. Then in the fall, leave them crowned up a little bit, but take the top off. So when you plant it's.
Flat.
Because when it's soft and you got that V that goes some hard. And then I've been here, we've talked about the sand, the chip seal, incorrect at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah. Yeah, that turned out nice. Um they did a great job. It is, I know I asked you on the side, uh Dear Meadow Road down by the town line.
Yeah.
Is that scheduled to be, have something done with it in the next couple of years?
Yeah.
Because we just replaced that ten years ago, ten, ten to twelve years ago. Well, when be- before COPA, the the. Correct. Spring COPA came in, we did that. Yeah. So I I'm just wondering, before it breaks all apart. It needs to, it needs to be overlaid. Yeah. So are we looking at that in the next couple of years? We can.
I assume we'll get all of that as part of the combination of Emmett and uh the.
C I P?
Oh, it's not the C I P, the the should get the report, but the.
The Central New Hampshire.
Central New Hampshire planning report. They're looking at all of the roads and the surfaces and uh supposed to assist in giving us a plan of what makes sense for when and and so on.
They're gonna give us money to do it?
No, they're basically doing the report. So um
Yeah.
The, along the lines of of specific locations, obviously, the last time we had folks coming and talking about Little Hill, uh and I knew you had talked about doing some drainage ditching and other things.
Finding out where the wires are.
Because I haven't looked. Uh has any of that happened or when do you expect to or is it when you are, have something kind of between that you can get there?
No, um I can do that and it would be great to do that ditching up through there. Um Dana did contact them at the phone company over there and Rich Little um called me that afternoon. And we talked on the phone. And then I called him back. He was gonna get ahold of me. He's working with someone out in New London. And then I called him because I need, I I did a work order with um Eversource on moving three poles on our job on Pleasant Street. And then they called back and said T D S owned the poles. So then I called Rich back. Um and he said that they're one ninety-five percent certain on Little Hill that that um cable's been abandoned down through there, but he hasn't called me back yet to say that it has or it hasn't. And so it's just, he was gonna call me back and let me know when he could meet me on the dump road. But I call it the dump road, Pleasant Street, to um look at the poles that I needed to be moved. So um Dana and I talked about that the other night.
Okay, so we are still waiting on T D S then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And um there's one other thing. I don't wanna point any fingers. I don't wanna whatevers, but today Russell gave me a a driveway permit that kinda knocked my socks off. Um you folks have sold the piece of property on the intersection of Corn Hill in Centennial Drive. It's the little, little uh shed there, or they've been working on it. You, the house went up for auction a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did French fry it?
Yeah. And then there was a little piece beside of that you guys sold.
To go with that house.
Right. So I I, how much did you get for that? Right, so I, how much did you get for that piece of land?
God, I don't know. Not much, I'm sure.
The, the town will have been able to have kept basically back taxes, however much that was.
Okay, so actually, you got nothing for it. So back in the day, when they sold land in Pillsbury Lake, the prior boards would talk to me about that. Because there's land in Pillsbury Lake that's owned, that we keep for reasons. And that reason, that piece of land shouldn't have been sold. Now it's sold, you can't do anything to get your site distance, that we spent all that money, two, three years of that stuff, or five years of that stuff all grows back up. Then you gotta beg and knock on somebody's door to cut the brush. So there's a bunch of land in Pillsbury Lake that runs from Franklin Pierce into Pillsbury Lake that has the runoff from New London Drive, from Mancha- from New London Drive down Manchester Drive to drain into that lake. And if you folks sell them pieces of land, so you can't dredge that, which is in the CIP to get that engineered, to get them dug out again. There's a lot of, there's a lot of little pieces, it's like the intersection when you come down Detour Road in, onto Pleasant at the stop sign, the town owns that triangle, that'd be crazy to sell that to the abbot. If you ever wanted to open that up to make the site distance better, but not trying to be a control freak, but there's a lot of little pieces that you guys don't see all day long at the land, because you don't go look at the land before you sell it. It could have a pot of gold on it and you sell it for ten dollars, could have a half a million dollars worth of lumber on it.
So the, what we've been doing is following the policies which also go through where the, uh, for example, the planning board and the conservation commission, et cetera, and what they had recommended to do with the land. So there's a list of that, and that's, and which may be, keep this for conservation, try to sell this, et cetera.
Well, we did that once, we did that.
And so the ones that we've been selling off are either recent tax deeds or are ones that were listed as should be sold.
Yeah, and we did, it was like...
So if you have specific plots that have other specific reasons in there, we should hang on to them? Please give a list of that to Russ so it can be added to that spreadsheet.
Or just find out when you sell land and, yeah, I've done this once, this is somewhere. It's gonna, the same thing's gonna happen, that piece of land I wanted down there and they didn't want me to have it on walk-upon. And then they turned it into conservation land, and it was never, nothing gonna happen to it, but what happened to it, it got sold.
Well, we're, we're doing everything we can to have the policies and follow the policies.
So now...
So if we add to that list, then that's the easiest way for, for us who are trying to follow everything to, to do it the right way.
So that, who, that...
But thank you for bringing that up.
Whoever did that didn't do the town any favors, selling that piece of land, for what you got out of it, cause you got nothing out of it.
Well, we don't usually get anything anyways.
Well...
I think, I think they were, yeah, it's not.
Well, it's worth more to keep, to maintain your road in your intersection and the brush and...
So what's the harm in taking the list that we, cause, I mean, I, I wouldn't...
So now I gotta sit down for an hour, we don't have no money in the budget, or two, or three, or four, and go through all that stuff again.
So you think there's a list already here somewhere?
There was.
Well, I'm sure Russ can give them a copy of the list that we have.
The select board always, before they sold the piece of land in Pillsbury Lake, the prior select board, prior select boards, not just one, and Roy could probably back me up on this. I'd go look at the piece of land before the town sold it to see if there was any interest in gravel or anything that the town could profit off that piece of land before they sold it for nothing. Am I right or wrong, Roy? In it...
So part of the problem with that is that anything that comes out of it profit-wise, we still don't get to keep as the town.
Well, no, but if it had gravel on it and you used it in your town, you don't have to pay anything for it, correct?
Well, that's like the one down on Dustin Road.
Yeah.
You're getting gravel out of, you're getting some stuff out of it.
We certainly could, if we have land that comes up like this in the future. It's unfortunate this happened, but in the future, we certainly could add it into the policy that we confer with the road agent.
And I know that at least for some things, we've asked about talking with the chiefs and so on for...
Maybe we should talk to the chief of police as well?
So, so maybe, maybe we should include that as part of...
The more information's the better, I mean, a lot of these old things that are, have been done, we don't have that.
But maybe that's one of those things where we should actually add it into the policy?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
So it's always followed instead of when people are thinking about it or not. We wanna try to do it right, but we do...
No, no, and I, I, I know it, I know it's a done deal, and I don't wanna point fingers or whatevers, but it's just, it's just kinda...
And it's good to look back at the process.
We've kept that, we've had that land for how long? That corner piece, for a long, long time, and that's why. If we hadn't had that corner piece, when we got down there to do the job, we wouldn't have been able to do it without a big cadu with the, with the property owner. And some property owners are great.
Yeah, yeah.
Some are real good, then there's others that don't budge.
Yeah, I believe that.
So I burnt that, I mean, I, I've got that bridge worn out, so...
Uh, last thing for you, cause I know you were starting to look at it or go down there, et cetera. How are, how are we looking for the support trailer?
Well, last I talked to you at the town hall, it wasn't gonna happen, so I told him to whatevers, because I, whatevers. That support trailer, I remember...
That, that was the question, whether you had been doing it or not, et cetera.
Yeah, Emery had it all set up.
Cause that's already in there.
So, but then you said you were using the money for something else the other day down to the town hall, you were doing that?
No, I was brainstorming, uh, to try and see what might be possible.
And then the chip sealing at the ta- at the fire station, you had a whole list of stuff, but that, that...
Of where things might be able to happen to allow you to do that sort of stuff.
All that stuff's gonna stay on our ambulance, until we get the other ambulance in June, so I can go down and get that other thing and park it here, or... It, it, it's not something that has to happen overnight, and it hasn't happened overnight, cause I've had all summer to do it, but... Yeah, so, so do you want me to follow through with it or not?
You have until December thirty-one of twenty-four to use the money that's in ARPA. So it's, it can stay there until then. But if we don't use that by then, it goes away.
Don't wanna go away.
No, it won't go away.
Oh, it won't go away.
Um, I'm just giving you a timeframe so that you can think about that.
So I apologize if my brainstorming came across as, don't do it, cause that was certainly not the intent.
Yeah, because we were talking about money going over budget, and then you talked about...
Where we might be able to pull other pieces to go towards roads.
Doing that, and, uh, money for the ceiling.
And you basically said no, cause it was already, the deal had already been done, so it's like, okay, cool. But that's, that's fine, it's my bad for being completely clear, I guess.
Trailer we went down to look at, and then when we went down to get it, they discontinued them lot, that line of trailers for a better line of trailers than an upgrade. And then we were getting that all in the works, and then, so...
So you mentioned...
Cause you told, cause your words were, if we don't get it from this, then we could put it out to the town and raise it through taxes. If I, unless I dreamt this up the other day in the, at the thing, so I just...
Part of my brainstorming was that if it's not coming, so we were trying to look for ways that we could give you the emergency road funding still, to be able to take care of more stuff, when we didn't think we would be able to find enough money to take care of the roads and the topping and so on that used and needed to be done. So we were looking at that, and one of the brainstorm ideas was if this hadn't happened yet, or wasn't like signed, sealed, et cetera, that maybe that could have been included in CIP instead of coming out of ARPA, so that then the ARPA funds could go towards the road stuff. That was part of the brainstorming, but I apologize if that came across as, no, we're doing it this way, cause that was absolutely not the intent.
All right, well, sometimes I misunderstand, but, so talking about funds and budgets and stuff are coming up. Okay? Should you really think about maybe having a rainy day fund in case this happens again? Because we were fortunate enough that I saved enough money on different projects and had money left over, not leftover, but I hadn't spent in the road preservation on some of my shimmin' that I was gonna do this summer, to bail us out over there. So maybe you should start thinking about whatevers, because it's no different than having a brush fire. You got ten grand in the forest fire thing, two hours of the helicopter on a two-day fire. That, that's gonna last you two hours when that first helicopter comes to town, and you'd be just like they were over there on the mountain. It's three hundred thousand dollars and it about wiped the town out. All, no, it weren't, it was...
So I will say that Dana and I have had some discussions about how that may or may not work. Some of his ideas when contacting DRA did not pan out as being possible, um, because I didn't sound like... We're still looking at ways that we may be able to do something similar. The thing that I would comment, and we're, we're not quite there yet, but the thing that I would comment on is if none of the additional fund for, for example, natural disasters, et cetera, if none of that is actually possible within the, the way that DRA wants us to handle things, uh, then the smart thing in my mind would be that the CIP would say, well, what typically gets hit in a natural disaster? Something like a road, and so we would aim to keep an additional amount, always as spare and backup in the road preservation fund to be able to handle something like that.
So it'd be like in the capital reserve?
Yes.
Because from what I...
But rather than expecting to use most of it, it would be, we're expecting to always leave X amount or something. Um, again, we're not there and, um, by CIP, but...
It's something to think about, I mean, it's not, nothing's gonna happen overnight, but, because what I've been hearing on the news and talking to different, Merrimack County didn't get picked up for any of the flood money.
We did not get, fortunately.
Yeah.
So...
We didn't have enough in damages, that's the reason why. Even though we had damage, we didn't hit the dollar threshold.
Merrimack County needed six hundred thousand dollars worth of damage.
And they didn't have it.
And didn't get there.
Yeah.
We had five fifty.
We did too good a job.
Probably, five ninety-eight, but...
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, so that's definitely something that should be considered, um, and when the presentations go to, for example, the CIP uh, for roads, that's definitely part of what should be mentioned and brought up. And we will go from there, I think, but Dana's working on figuring out ways that, what will make the most sense for the town to do that.
Dana does a good job, so he'll figure something out. All right, I've said enough, thank you for listening to me.
Um, I do wanna wrap back, um, because you, you mentioned that you stopped the, the trailer thing. My question, and then you said something about June for the, the new, uh, ambulance. So is this something that you would continue to be using once you had the new ambulance? Or would you be expecting to kind of use it as a stop cap and then an extra backup once you had the ambulance?
No, once we have, once we do away with the truck that we're running now, when we get the new ambulance, if that deal falls through the way it's supposed to, there'll be no room on that, that, that will be an ambulance. It won't have room for the cascade and the generator.
So it's basically when the new ambulance happens that you need the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that's why I had that, if I needed it, I would've run down there and hooked on to it and gotten back home, but...
Okay, thank you for the clarification, that's the first time that I understood that it was only tied to when the new ambulance finally showed up.
Well, it would be nice to have it all working and all in place and all that, so if, once you got every, everything... New use.
So how, how are we with road budgeting and so on for the, the funds and, and the like? Are, are we okay without having to take and find everything else that we can possibly scrounge towards it?
So, uh, if you're asking with the budget and the trust funds, is that what you're thinking of? Uh, Emmett and I have been keeping track of the trust funds, um, with his projects. We know we're gonna get to the end of the year and the truck, the, the trust funds are going to be very low, which is no surprise. Uh, the budget is holding its own, highway is overdrawn in several lines, as you know. But the rest of the budget can offset that, and if it changes, we'll have to do something else, but I don't anticipate that.
Okay.
No, I think Dana and I have been working, and every time I go do something, I run down, at least attract it, see where we're at, and, and, um...
So I think we've been, I think it's...
Yeah.
I think we're doing the best we can in keeping it under control.
And I got a friend, I got a friend that's got some money, he's gonna let me...
I know.
Okay, so...
Well, we can wish there's not gonna be any snow till January.
I want it March.
Or March, yeah, that'd be better.
No snow till March. April first.
If we didn't want to lose you, I'd say we'll move.
I'll say it twice.
Right, I know.
I think we've been trying to do a pretty good job of not micromanaging and just asking status, but I wanna leave it that way.
No, no.
When you think it's appropriate, then we've got the fund.
Yeah, no, I...
It is still set aside for that funding for it, so as you see it perfectly.
No, no, I don't, I don't, if I had a problem, you know I got a mouth, I'll speak.
But yes, so, all right.
Okay, I'm up. Health report, it's been a very interesting few months, that's about it, noth- nothing super major. I turned in a report to Dana today. Uh, I'd like to keep the budget, all this, what we currently have in there. Now, it's Michelle Tromley, correct Dana?
Yes.
Okay, she has asked, this past spring, we had the black water tested, uh, for bacteria and so forth, and it came back clean. The big thing on that test that she has done with the water pollution and so forth, that's the snapshot at that particular moment, okay? The water keeps moving, it doesn't mean five minutes from now, someone, something dies upstream and then the bacteria works its way down. They would like to test the black water for, uh, the bacteria, I'm trying to remember the actual name for what they're testing for, but it's, so you don't get sick of it. And I did allow her to take the first test out of the health department's budget to pay for it. I, I think it's good for the community. She's asking that this be put into the health department's budget for next year. I like to keep my budget the way it is, add her couple hundred dollars.
I think she said that she was looking for you to pay for one test.
One test.
And I thought she told me it was a hundred twenty dollars.
Okay, a hundred and twenty, somewheres in that vicinity.
And I just might mention to the board, I gave you, uh, Roy's budget, two of those are the health agencies, which is a different subject. So the top one, the health administration is the line, he, is where we are.
Yeah, and, and currently, right now, it, I'm gonna be turning in close to thirteen hundred dollars, there's still thirteen hundred dollars in my budget. There's still thirteen hundred dollars in my budget. I've submitted an invoice for Matt, myself and Paula. You know, I haven't submitted anything really for this year. So I've just submitted a invoice for some time served for all three of us. Things have been quiet, not on wood. I have had a few verbal inquiries that are not listed down on my little spreadsheet here. The only thing, one that took up most of the time was foster home inspections. So, and I left the name off of that, just let you know it's foster home inspections. So that's about it, really.
Roy, I had a question.
Yes.
So we have the health officer and we have two deputies now.
Correct.
So I guess we need to figure out how much we should leave aside to pay those people for that. As well as you also, you and Paula were members of the New Hampshire Health Officers Association.
Correct.
Are you adding Matt? It's forty-five dollars a year.
I would add Matt to it. I would add Matt to it.
Forty-five apiece?
Yeah.
Last year you budgeted two thousand ninety dollars.
Right, that was, that was because of the forty-five dollars for the two of us.
Right. And and then you had, you've only spent three ninety-five, which was a hundred twenty for that water test.
Yep.
And I think, and I forget though what the other was, but maybe it was a stipend or something.
And I just, I just submitted-
I guess I was curious what you were thinking you needed in that line.
I just submitted an invoice for-
I saw those.
Four hundred and fifty dollars to come out of it. Really, I, I, the first year I took over the health inspector and I gave you the report. I, I mean, the hours Paula and I had put in, it was really something else. It didn't even cover the the gas for traveling back and forth on everything and the research we had to do. I like to keep it, it'll, total, if you add her, one fifty and then the other, uh, twenty-three hundred dollars. It, and that should cover everything. That would, that would cover the association fees, the water testing, and then if we get hit again.
Do you, oh, sorry, do you and Paula and Matt, do you get paid a certain amount? Or is it based on what happens?
It's, it's, it's what I figure for our hours in in the fuel, that's it. It's, it's, if we do nothing, me, I'm not taking anything. But I'll tell you, it is the last line on my report for the report. We get a minimum, you know, five notices from the health department, minimum. And actually, within the past two weeks, I think I got ten, just in the past two weeks. But the average is about five a month. And usually, three of them are pertinent to something for our area that we have to read up on and so forth and talk about. So, you know, if, how can I phrase it? If all I do is read this and we don't have any inquiries, I'm not charging. I'm, I'm, I'm not depleting the budget, let's put it that way, to pad the wallet.
So, so let me ask a question that may be interesting. Obviously, the line at one point was listed as a stipend. Now, it's more of a catch-all.
Yeah.
Do you think that, like with some of the other positions, it should be a stipend per year? Based on, this is kind of an average of what the position does? And then some years, you're busy, some years you're not?
Yeah.
Or do you think it should be more of a, we do, we develop a rate? And then the rate goes out as that stipend, like reimbursement style, kind of like this, going forward?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. It could be the person involved. Okay, me, as I look at it, you know, I donate a lot of time to the community. And and that's the way I am. And Matt is the same way. But you may end up getting someone that's not that way, well, you want me to do it? You know, and I take a phone call, my minimum rate is twenty dollars an hour. So it's, you know, five bucks for fifteen minutes, even though I only talked on the phone for two. You know, I, I don't know. I don't know. It, it's something open for future discussion.
Yeah, it's like me, you're busy all day.
Yeah.
And you did a hundred things, but there was no billable, there was, yeah, you didn't make any money at the end of the day.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, the previous health inspector, you know, the doctor and the nurse, you know, they, they donated a lot of time to the community too. And she, Nancy has actually apologized, asking us to take this over because we really got nailed that first year. It was-
So, health inspector? We're in and out of homes all the time, what, what do you do?
Part, part of the thing, there's an interesting one going on right now. I forget, I forget what town it is. The department, not the health department, but the fire department went in because they had a medical call. And the house was a hoarder. And it really didn't have running water. And there was, the way I take it, was worse than the one we had down at Pillsbury Lake.
Well, that was bad.
That was bad.
That was bad.
It was worse than that. But as it comes down to, if you own the property, you can live-
Any way you want.
Any way you want.
Because at the Capitol area meeting the other night, there was a fire chief there that asked Sean, Fire Marshal, um, ten years, two tops over the roof and-
Yep.
The whole thing, and you had all you could do to get in and out of the house. And he just said, well, it's the Vance Castle. It's his home, it's his castle, and-
Correct.
You know, if he, there's not a done thing you can do.
Correct. The difference that we had at Pillsbury Lake.
They were renting.
They were renting.
Yeah.
And where I messed up was, right after I posted, the place is uninhabitable, un, an officer for me. You know what I mean? I didn't run right up to Franklin District Court and give him the paperwork. When she saw it on the door, she ran right up to Franklin District Court and then got the order from the judge to let her back in.
So she knew the system better.
I was gonna say, that's what I was just saying.
She knew, she knew the system better than I did.
Yeah.
You know, I knew I had to go up, but, you know, it was later in the day and she got up just before the door closed.
So I think you were at the house the night I left to go to that house fire.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Because you, because of the, because we, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But that was after it was cleaned up, except for the bedroom downstairs. Oh, yeah. The additional inspection. But it, 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 it's tough.
They only, like he said, the fire marshal told us, well, this other fire chief and I were talking to him about some stuff after the meeting. And he said, all you folks can do is try to educate these people. You can't make them have a smoke detector, you can't make them have a CO detector, you can't make them do anything.
Unless it's new construction.
Well, right, but correct, you're right, but.
Control. Yeah. But once they get the occupancy permit.
Yeah, it's over.
It, it, it's over. You can do what you want to your domain. So, but I, I was thinking initially, twenty dollars an hour on that.
Okay, so that's kind of how you figured out?
Roughly for the budget. And actually, I didn't charge twenty dollars an hour for my time that I had done on this. It, it, it come to less than that. I'm gonna pat myself on the back.
We always appreciate you doing a wonderful job and not charging us for it.
Any questions for the health department? I have a question for the board. Have we heard anything from the cockpit monitor about the littering? Like what I classify as littering in town?
I haven't gotten any from them.
We did write, write a letter, but.
Correct, a couple of letters. I, I've written a couple of, it, it's the monitor echo or their newspaper. Well, it's not the regular newspaper, it's the advertisements that they-
It's kind of free until they just talk to you.
You can't even buy the newspaper.
Which is funny because everyone's complaining they're not actually getting their delivery.
That's right.
We haven't even done that.
I know, it is weird.
This past week, they had a different person, the regular paper delivery person for my section.
Yeah.
Was on vacation. The one that they had got to replace him, did one day, I think it was, and then had car trouble the rest of the week. That's why I've gone electronic. But I'm back out walking, so I'm gonna be picking the stuff up, so you might get a blue bag here.
So one other thing that I'd forgotten about until Roy, and Roy will probably work with me on this. Out behind, if you leave Dinget's Corner from your house and walk down to the Y towards Deer Meadow.
Yeah.
To Corn Hill.
Yep.
And go up around the corner on Deer Meadow where you folks just did the work behind that nice house there.
Oh, to, to the little horse farm?
Yeah. And that body of water out in that area went from the size of this bone to, I haven't walked around it.
Oh, Jesus.
But it's, it's acres now.
It's posted, and that's posted now. There, there's a posting, no trespassing. If you go down Garrish Road, just where you could go in to the left.
And and I, I haven't looked it up to see who owns that, but I don't, the beavers are in there. I mean, this has been going on for the last couple of years, three along, but it, it's getting real noticeable. So up on the flat where you come out of Christopher Roberts, and you look right straight out in there. The water, in another year, is gonna be right out to the side of that road. So, um.
That land's for sale, that was, wasn't that the one that they just have a-
No, no, that's up a little bit further. And, but that's wetlands there and right, and, but I don't know.
The Beaver Dam controls that. If you go down Garrish Road.
On the left.
It's on the left-hand side, there's a clearing, and now there is a no trespassing sign on the tree.
Yeah, I, I don't go out there.
I know, but when you go up in there, if you take a left, that's where the Beaver Dam is. And we had a road agent take care of that pond one year. It almost took out all of Deer Meadow Road by the lawns.
I was, I know, I was on vacation, I remember that.
So it's just something, it's something that needs to be addressed. I don't know how you wanna go about it or what you wanna do. I know fishing game doesn't work with you with beavers.
Can you look into how we can most appropriately?
A landowner, a landowner can take down a beaver?
I, I believe that land is owned now by the couple that have the horses.
Yeah, on top of the hill.
On top of the hill.
Yeah.
The Bears.
Whatever their name is.
Who is that?
The Bears, David Bear.
Oh.
Yeah, they're nice folks, I mean, I've always, but.
Yeah, I've seen her out riding. I believe they own the land, they bought it through driver callers.
That, that little body of water.
Oh, it's expanded.
It's huge now, and I just, yeah.
Well, and it will, maybe not, but be petted.
And it's not on this, what was the total asked, was twenty-three hundred? Anything further for, we kind of drifted into budget, so.
Thank you for all this work.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. All right, I guess we continue on.
Transfer agreement, this is what I'm gonna listen to.
You know, I'm just giving you something, I don't think I did, but.
Don't blame me on that. I wanna listen to it.
Not unless it's attached to one of those.
Yeah, B and H, no, that's, no, wait, let's see.
No, no, that's the, well, those, we might as well start with those, I've seemingly have video. But the, those are the letters from the health agencies. One is the visiting nurses, they're asking for the same amount that was funded last year. And the other is CASA, and they're asking for the same amount that was funded last year. So if we use twenty-three hundred for the health administration, which includes Roy's dues and payment to the health officer and the deputies, the total budget there is forty-eight hundred. And last year was forty-five ninety, so it's up two hundred, ten dollars.
Stay safe.
I wanted to talk to you about welfare and a gremlin went by and stole it from me. Oh my gosh, this really drives me crazy.
I know, it's just crazy.
It's the wrong folder.
Yeah, I must have it in the wrong folder. You know, I've just been over here shuffling this stuff.
That's why, that's the problem, you've been shuffling.
I've been shuffling too much.
That's great.
Yeah, I'll watch it on, I can fast forward to what I wanna listen to. Actually, since I've had my knee, I've cut back on drinking. I've lost fifteen pounds. I don't eat as much, I don't like as much.
Good for you.
I just look along.
But you're still laughing as much, that's good.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks.
See you later. So what are you looking for, the?
I'm looking for the welfare budget.
But those did we-
Do you have it on his computer?
I have one, I saw welfare.
Oh, she's got, oh.
I got one.
Oh, okay, that, that's where those are.
Was it only one, do you have more?
No, health, community action, so I thought that was health.
Okay, well, I see one, I can share with you.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, we can't even see it.
Give me my eyeballs back.
That's all right.
Excuse me, okay.
That's all right.
Well, it's all right. One's health.
And community action, okay.
All right.
So you got all three of them?
Wait, what's this? No, I got this, okay, I got it.
Okay.
Right here, it's in this thing.
Anyway, it's not, there aren't many lines.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Send a packet.
Oh, I thought I was losing my mind.
You are the only one losing my mind.
Help. Yeah, well, yeah. I try to do that every day.
So I'm just gonna look over Dee's shoulder if I could. Thank you. All right, the welfare, oh, wait, sorry, that was actually my old copy.
I thought I'd gotten an extra one.
Yeah, we should start using the projector.
I did not change.
You can, you can, I mean, I can listen. I mean, I guess I, one of my, it's kind of like.
Can we tell it's a Monday?
Right, well, how about waking up and your dog gets sprayed by scum?
Here.
Oh, my God.
So last year, if I could just take this from all.
I'll just listen and I can look it up.
I found it.
You did, okay.
We're, we're good.
Marvelous, okay. So because there was a budget remaining, I have left the proposed director salary the same. That may change after my, this is not a good time to bring it up, after my review. The vendor payments this year have been greatly reduced from last year. We had five thousand dollars last year. We budgeted five thousand, we've spent nine hundred compared to last year where we had a horrible year. I haven't used any, we had mileage, two fifty, I haven't used any of that. So the short answer on welfare, haven't changed anything. So, the short answer on welfare, haven't changed anything.
Since that's training mileage and dues, what were the dues supposed to go towards?
I, the welfare, the state welfare association. And they may not have, the bill may not have come yet.
Okay, and how much is that?
Oh, I think it's like twenty dollars.
Okay. Yeah, so just leaving everything the same seems like a sensible way to be able to handle when, if something happens.
Yep, sounds good.
The, barring changes that will most likely be made to all salaries after all of the.
Well, probably after my fifteen percent raise.
Why? What have you been drinking?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, I'm sorry for the confusion on that.
Okay.
I need complete midris.
We'll forgive you, honest.
The other budget on its own, community action program, which I may have thrown in there.
Yeah, it's right here.
That was fifty-four, it's been fifty-four hundred for the past few years. I have not heard if they've got a different request. So I've left it at fifty-four hundred, and we have really gotten a huge bang for our buck out of that. So I, I can't, they've really assisted me a lot. One of the reasons why my figures this year are quite a bit down is because they've been able to take over.
Good, awesome.
I've been able to get people into their program.
Oh, good.
Which is really nice. Then my, the last budgets to talk to you about, these are my favorite ones, is the short and long-term debt. And so I, you don't have that, do you?
I was going to say, I don't think I have.
You don't have it either, Marla. It's kept in a secret.
All right.
There's been a lot of that tonight.
Yeah.
I know, am I wrong?
Last year. We, we funded the long-term principal and notes and the interest for a dollar each. And we also funded the short-term, the tan interest for a dollar, and that was to keep the accounts open in case for unforeseen reason that something happened. So, I'm not proposing any changes to that.
Good, that's good.
All right, check those off the list.
Yeah, really.
So those, those are the easy ones. I hate, good luck next time. Hopefully I'll be on top of it, because those are pretty important ones coming up.
Oh, yeah, pretty fun ones coming up.
You know, but.
A fun balance?
Well, that is one fun balance. Anyway, so that's my presentation for budgets. So in other words, nothing.
No, that was a good presentation. I like that.
Well, this is, we're just getting our toes wet.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Budget season now.
And then come next week, you know, wait till you see what we do then. So that's all I have for budgets today.
Okay.
Transfer. Dave, what did you find in the new transfer agreement? Anything good?
Well, it, it's not new.
Oh, excuse me. Wait a minute, sorry.
Yeah. But it is the same one we saw last time.
Well, that's what I guess I'm trying to ask you.
Last time, because we hadn't had the whole thing, we had the front page or something, I thought that something was missing, and Dana has pointed out that it's actually in part of the text for number four.
Yep.
Which was looking over the ordinance. So the question that I would pose beyond, it looks like a reasonable agreement at this point, is, I guess that's not really a question. But my question to pose would be, since a lot of this is now turning towards review of and how the ordinance is and is written and is implemented and is being reviewed every time, what is in that and should anything either change there at the same time, or be pulled from there and included in the agreement? Because the ordinance can change more easily and fluidly with both boards just agreeing after a public hearing, as opposed to the agreement is town meeting.
I haven't looked at the ordinance in depth, and I don't, Neil and I have not talked about the ordinance, but I think this would be a good time to look at it and see if something should be changed.
And regarding the agreement portion, has what is here so far gone through either town's lawyers as of yet, that you know?
No, I haven't sent, I wanted you to be comfortable before I sent it over. I would like to give you this comments that I got this afternoon from Craig. Because he had asked if he could look at a copy of the proposed agreement. So he had a comment on it. He's concerned at number two of the day-to-day operation, and he explains what, why.
Okay. So, the short of it is number two, with day-to-day operations being directed by Hopkinton, and how, if we had a comment or felt something needed to be adjusted in that, how would we have a voice to effect that change or implementation instead of just providing money and approving a budget? Which is a valid question.
I thought so too.
And I think part of, I think part of that should be addressed in the ordinance, but again, that's where maybe it should be in the agreement instead of the ordinance, since there's no longer this joint town committee that was supposed to do this sort of thing.
I think, when I was thinking of number two, and I, I hear what Craig is saying, and I, I think it's a good idea. But my thought on number two, when I, the day-to-day operation.
Right.
They can't work for two boards.
And I think that's why we didn't, I think that's why we kind of left it like that.
Right.
Hoping that if there was something major that came along, we would have a say.
And.
Correct? Because what, didn't, didn't you, I felt like you kind of worked.
This goes more towards the like, policy side of things, or like the procedures, which we had been talking about. Let's see, towards the end sections. I'm trying to see if we've got that in here still. No, because the, there was the large discussion in Hopkinton that why do we need to include policy stuff? Because that's not like a program or an implementation, and that would be part of the either operation or the ordinance. And I would suggest that, for example, how stickers are dealt with is probably more in the ordinance versus, and not having looked at, looked into the ordinance.
Right.
Is probably currently more in the ordinance as opposed to a policy that's been agreed to or an operating procedure. But that's a good one that should be used as a clarifying point, much like we've used green bags for clarifying points on, on programs in the past, to help craft an agreement that, that will take into account all of that. And if it's in the ordinance, maybe it should stay in the ordinance, because both boards are looking at it, agreeing on it, adjusting it. Maybe it should be a person hired to do it, maybe it should be a part of a job, maybe it should just be something that has to be taken care of, and then they're dealing with hiring to make sure it happens. But those are, I think we need to look further into the ordinance, like we're supposed to review if this is passed.
I think that in, in the agreement, maybe, maybe as you're saying, to address this in the ordinance? More in the ordinance?
Well.
Have it referred to the ordinance here?
And again, the, what has been, one of the things that was dropped from the previous drafts was a section for policies. And this would be kind of that policy thing, but the argument was that the policy stuff would already be covered in the ordinance. So I think we should look and see if there's a section for that in the ordinance, and if there is, and it calls out how that's supposed to be done, then in the annual, at least annual review of that ordinance.
Which will be part of.
That could be brought up and, and be dealt with. If it's not in the ordinance, then we probably need to bring back some sort of language towards policies.
Okay, why don't I do that for next meeting? Get the ordinance out, and I'll be familiar with it.
Sounds good.
And.
And hopefully.
And we'll hold on this and see how we can reword it when the time is appropriate.
So that is a very astute question. Thank you, Craig. And I know we've asked some of the previous committee members in the past for thoughts on where we should head with the agreement. Now that we seem to be getting closer to where that agreement is likely to be landing, we may want to ask them if they would provide comment on where we expect the agreement to go.
Okay.
Because more eyes are never bad for, have you considered this?
Two heads are better than a line.
And of course, you know, what we have gotten so far is many people are concerned, they're looking at more of a recycling type of approach.
Yeah. And there, there was a, to, to forewarn anybody in, that may receive more calls in the office there. When the grapevine went out, a lot of people started a nice firestorm about, are we doing a green bag program in Webster? And so that was a huge firestorm. I, I think I answered the, the questions there, like.
I thought.
This was, this was just to facilitate the discussions of how the agreement should go, but we'll.
Yeah.
We'll see where that goes. But hopefully you won't get inundated with calls.
Well, if we do, we'll handle them.
Okay. Is there anything further on the transfer station agreement? Okay, so that moves us on to the assessing contract.
So I redid, I reworked the comparisons on the bids that we received. The, one of the difficult things to figure is what the unknown is, as far as the pickups and extra hours needed for landings, change taxes, abatements, sales verification, et cetera. I used, so I compared, Avatar was easy because they gave a flat figure for everything, and they didn't consider whether you might have one or five hundred. The average that we normally have is about a hundred twenty-five, and the cross-country appraisal had put that down. They had been the assessor at one time, so they kind of had an idea of how many.
Yeah, they were the previous assessor.
Yeah, and so I put the same for Comerford, Neer, and Perkins, and I think they were pretty close to that as well, just at the changes in costs for pickups and the hourly rate. So Avatar was two hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred, which did include the utilities. Comerford, Neer, and Perkins is, came out to a hundred eighty-one thousand one twenty-five, and we're talking the overall life of the contract, the five-year contract, which does not include the utilities. Cross-country appraisal came to two fifty-eight, seven fifty, which does include utilities. I spoke with our utility appraiser, Skip San Souci's company. Right now, we're paying ten thousand eight seventy-five per year. They're willing to give us a five-year contract from April twenty-five to April twenty-nine, so that's twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I always have to do that, that way, for the same cost per year, ten thousand eight seventy-five. So knowing that, Comerford, Neer, and Perkins would be what, one hundred ninety-three thousand or so?
So still by far the.
So.
Least expensive.
And that's who we're using now.
That's our, that's our present assessor.
Yeah, so about sixty thousand less than the next lowest over the course of five years. And we seem to be fairly happy in having worked out all of the.
Oh, it's, it's always going to be a work in progress, but.
You know, these three firms are very well-known, and, and I think that we, we know them. We've used Avatar, I've worked with Avatar before, they're very professional and very good. CNP, I think that now that we're, we're kind of at, we have to really stay on top of things and not assume that they're going to follow through, and that's on us to do, and I think that is something we've, Russ has gotten quite good at doing. And cross-country, it's, it's, it's the same really with every assessor. I mean, you have the same thing. So I think for the change, my suggestion would be for the difference in the cost to stay with who you have now.
I agree.
And the, my, my comment on that would be that, well, our utility assessor is a higher price as an individual line item compared to utility appraisals in some of the other con, like cross-country for example. We certainly have one of the best, and he, it, part of that contract is that any representation needed is included. Whereas the others, it would be additional hourly rates should any representation be needed. And especially with the possible power line upgrade going in, hopefully stuff with the interconnection and the solar farm, et cetera. I think having probably the best guy is certainly additional weight to that, especially when it's part of a package that ends up being the least overall.
That's right. I think you said that last time, he was a good guy. He knows his stuff, so.
Well, it's, you know, the, my comment on that is, every year since I've been in this business, utilities put an abatement in. It's an automatic, it's an automatic thing. And why not? They, you know, they, who knows?
Nothing to lose.
You know, they have, they really don't have anything to lose. And I just felt for years, and not here, but I felt for years, you know, people have rolled over and, you know, given up, and then it goes to court, and then the court, you never know what's going to happen in court. But Skip is, he knows this stuff. And he may not know, I don't know if he knows, regular assessing, but it seems that this is a very specialized field.
And it's all he does.
And it's all he does, yeah.
So do you need a motion?
So I guess I'm looking for two things. I'm looking for if you, which firm that you, you want to continue with, and I'm looking if you want to extend the contract with Skip San Souci.
One question before we finalize anything. We've had issues for, in some of the past years with not getting data as fast as we needed to be able to send out our taxes in the timeframe that we'd like to be able to do that. Do we have appropriate dates in the new or revised or continuing contracts? And or any sort of monetary type you've delayed, now we have delays and lack of, or whatever sort of financial penalties?
What we don't have right now, these are proposals for service. We don't really have a contract. We haven't really drafted the contract. So we could add gates that we're expecting. And yes, we get to this time of year and we're delayed. There's, there's so many pieces that go together, setting the tax rate, and this year with the revale, I can understand that. And.
Well, and I don't think they're the, like, I think we've got several people that haven't been ready yet, right?
You know, and, and also the.
Like the school.
Yeah, if, if we, if we got it tomorrow, we're still not ready to set the tax rate. And I would like to set it. And I would like to set it, well, I would really ideally like to set it, have it ready for you at your next meeting on the 16th, because I would like to see Karen be able to mail the bills by the end of the month and have them due first of December. And I'm foolishly optimistic that that might happen. But again, last year what happened, the Department of Education was holding up the school.
Oh.
And so, you know, so it's, there's so many things needed. But I think that it's not a bad idea in the contract to put in dates we expect some things to be done.
And another point for the contract would be a sore point that we've heard multiple times from people in both, you know, Facebook comments, but also in meetings, is notification ahead of time when they're going to go to people's properties.
I couldn't agree more. Russ and I have just.
That definitely needs to be in the contract with some sort of enforcement mechanism. Because it should be simple, right? You know?
Yeah.
Call, give us a call or something, so we can post X days ahead of time. But with that.
And that's been a problem with many different firms I've dealt with.
But yeah, with that, did you, we do kind of need a motion, right?
I would, I would prefer a motion, right, yeah.
So I would move that we accept the lowest proposal package to continue with a renewal of contract with Comerford Neader and Perkins as well as Skip Sansucci for utility appraising. Those two be approved together as new contracts in the future.
A second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I noticed that I put Comerford Neader and purchases.
I noticed that last time, and then I saw it again, so.
Not well.
I'm sure it was autocorrect.
I have the agreement, which is the same agreement with Skip Sansucci, for the board to sign. Would you like me to put it in next, the next packet so you can read it?
So A, yes, but B, before we sign an extension with him, we should make sure that we have a contract that we're signing at the same time for CNP.
Fair enough, okay.
That part of the end of the motion was to sign them together.
Uh, yes, you still need that, that's a different problem.
Oh, okay.
I have so many problems, I can't, I can't come up with, okay.
He told me I can't forget this.
Oh my gosh.
Ah, so that's the assessing.
Okay. So I see what looks, I think it is then going into our correspondence in the packet. So for new business, we would go to intent to cut?
Yeah. So that is, Russ received an intent to cut, and it's for Benjamin Smith, and I don't believe Marlo should sign this one.
But my pen now?
I believe it's her company.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, so I see, sign one, I don't have to write my name, right?
Sure, I will, yeah. We'll handle it.
Okay, thank you. All right, there you go, sir. Top line's for you. That other woman can't sign it. I know. I haven't really even seen it. Some files.
Battle Street.
With a little white out on there.
I guess, for any, no, adjustments.
I put an intent in, or the guy, my guy, and it was 10.094, and he put 10.1 or something, and I had to redo it.
Oh no.
I'll get this to you, Marlo.
Okay.
Not that, I'm sure you.
You just want to keep your stuff.
Well, I just, you know, let me read it while you're there.
I will, I will let you be responsible for it a little longer.
Okay, any other new business?
No.
I guess that brings us to correspondence.
Okay, I'm in correspondence, and the first thing was the letter about the first project amendment, which is the Close Pin Bridge project over Blackwater River. And this is, they needed several things, and we have all of them. One thing I hadn't had to do was to make a motion that I am authorized to enter into the agreement on behalf of the town. And they need to have that certified. So that's.
That's why you got the green box, the little green box.
That's where this comes, so I'm hoping that you would make a motion like that.
Is Marlo gonna do it?
Yes, to authorize Dana.
Here.
They gave us the language.
Why did I have to read it? Why didn't I just like you knew it? Uh, so authorize the town administrator Dana Hadley to sign the state bridge aid and federal aid program project agreement for the state project number 40810, and the federal project number signed X-A-005217. This is regarding the replacement of the Close Pin Bridge over the Blackwater River, bridge number 121/103.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You could just say no once, Dee. Just once. Just for a little spice.
To what?
She could say no just once. It wouldn't matter, just for a little spice.
That way he's got a copy that we just did it, and it's rather than waiting for a group minutes and everything. It goes faster.
Then I'm just gonna fill in, the motion was made by Marlo.
And then I gotta stand up and sign it.
Yeah. And seconded by date.
Yep.
So you're just gonna certify to all.
That you're in charge.
I didn't, I didn't put that on, I thought you just stamp it and put to all or something like that.
Stamp it and sign it.
There we go. All signatures. Is that what you want me to write on this?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
But you, you know what all this, all this means, right?
You know, it's scary, but I think I do.
Good.
But I have to know, you know, I had to, I have to send them my, my certificate that I got from my training.
Wow.
He's all trained up.
Oh, he's trained, man.
Oh, I'm trained, yeah, that's scary.
He knows about the litter boxes now.
Thanks. On, on, on the subject of the bridge, I had a meeting with the engineer and Chip Johnson, who is the, the appraiser for the property.
Yep.
And he has worked on, come up with pricing on what we need.
Oh, good.
For, you know, we have three, we have easements, we have temporary easements, and we also have take. So at the risk of putting myself on a limb, Dee, you should hear from him somewhat soon.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna hear from him a long time ago.
I'm having another meeting with him on this Friday afternoon.
You want me to come to that meeting?
So it's on, on, on the TV. It's on the computer.
Well, I could scare him more if I come.
You know, well, and I, every time, every time, actually, Greg has been very good about saying, and well, you know, that's one of the select board members' property. And so I usually say, oh yeah, and you should know her.
Yeah, right. That's right, scary woman.
So I, it seems to be very slow. The, the good news is that 80% of the money we spent for that will be just on the state through the bridge.
Good, that's good. And then the bridge is not gonna cost us anything, which is even better.
You know, I mean, we may.
Other than the, we could have been paying for the whole bridge.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think this is really very lucky.
Terrific, oh geez.
And it's a lot of paperwork to do.
Oh, I can imagine.
And, and things like that, and it takes, you know, it takes much longer than you think it should.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Speaking of that 80%, you mentioned when we talked in the office at one point that we should be getting some form of reimbursement from the state eventually towards the engineering that we've been paying all out as well. When that happens, how is that expected to come in? Because that wouldn't be, for example, an anticipated revenue. How, like, how is that supposed to be handled when it happens? And do we need to account for anything for that?
Well, I was thinking it would come under, like, the same things that we use for grants under that type of income, whereas the board had approved it many years ago to accept those types of money. So it's not really, we don't have to have a public hearing, I would believe.
Okay.
But I will, I will check into that, because it would be, we've spent, right now we have probably about 250,000 in the bridge, so 80% of it is, say, 200, that we, that I hope we get.
Yeah, right.
Plus whatever else, you know, that we have going on. So we've got, we have to supply them all the backup which we have for that. So I'll make sure that we do it correctly, but I think that we don't really have, it's just going to go into our coffers.
Okay.
And I wish it were tomorrow, because I could use it.
Yeah, really.
Okay.
Other piece of correspondence I got, and I just wanted to give you, this came in today too, or came in Friday, and I got it today, because I was out on Friday, was a little note from Richard George regarding some ideas that he had regarding the Pond Hill Culvert. And I think I had, did you make copies of it?
Yeah, I did.
But the thing is, where did I put it? You know what? You really should be watching me every day, Russ.
I mean, isn't that wonderful?
It's really nice to him to do that.
Yeah, he.
Does he have a background in that kind of stuff?
I think he's an engineer.
Oh, is he? Oh, I don't know. I know where he lives and all that.
Yeah, I, I think so. He's a very, he's very smart.
Yeah, that's good. Appreciate that. That's great to have somebody.
He's trying to think of ways to save the town money.
Yeah.
If we must find a good solution, that'll also save the town money, so.
So what I am waiting for, I'm waiting for Chad from Mitchy to give me his ideas. And then I'll bring that back to you, the Pond Hill Row thing, and then you can decide what you want to go.
Sounds good.
We're chugging later on here.
But that way we can find it again.
Yeah.
It looks like you also included a letter regarding an enforcement letter?
Yes, indeed we did.
Indeed we did. Oh, God.
And I'm gonna find it any moment.
Want to borrow mine?
Although the, the gentleman, the, the subject gentleman plans to come see you at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Since they mentioned in two to three weeks it should be completed, then hopefully that is, yep, I'm done. Come look and see that it's not there.
I guess that's what he's trying to tell you.
Well, when they come in, they can tell you that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
You know, he says it's not a driveway, it's.
Right.
When it's a driveway, not a driveway, I guess that's it.
I, because, you know, temporary accesses and stuff are allowed.
So did you want to wait before you sign that and while, to talk with him?
I didn't, oh, this was the.
The letter, the enforcement letter?
Didn't we already do the letter?
I thought we did too.
I thought we did.
I'm sorry, you did. Okay, never mind. Don't bother.
This was a response to the letter.
Yeah, this was the response to the letter that was sent, and that was.
But I was ready to sign again for you, Dana. I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
So, so I think that's.
Oh, you did give us a copy.
Oh, good, good. About that.
See, you're two steps ahead of yourself.
I am, I am, that's right, because that's why.
You're so far ahead of yourself, you're falling over yourself.
That's right.
Oh, doesn't that happen too?
Okay, I'm all right now. Everything's good.
Let's go.
All right. Any other correspondence?
Not in correspondence, no.
All right. And that moves us to public comment, of which there are none.
Well, you're right. I shouldn't skip our public.
And so, that brings us to meeting minutes.
I didn't see anything wrong with them.
I think Dee is getting to them now.
Oh, no, I, no, I, no, no, I am. I was reading, I'm sorry. My motion to accept them as written?
Sure.
I would make that motion.
All right.
A second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Which brings us to signing and motions.
Okay, let's start with signing.
Sign our way away with this.
Karen King gave me an agreement with Newfound Title Services. This is the second year that she's used them, and they do her research as far as liens and things like that. They did a great job last year. She'd like to continue with them, it's the same cost. And basically, she's looking for the chair to sign the agreement.
Which.
There you go, sir.
What line item does this come out of?
It comes out of the, in the tax collector.
Because I see these.
She adds it into her taxes, you know, people, we don't actually pay for that at the end of the day.
Oh, okay, so this is like per notice then kind of thing, and it goes into that notice.
You know, the penalty that she charges and things like that paid for that.
All right. And I will scan through this, but does anybody else here see any reason not to do this? Otherwise, I am inclined to.
I would say.
Follow our tax collector's advice.
She knows her business, I would say. It's a good idea.
Yeah, and she, and she gets the fees back, so.
Yep.
Changing that's probably not, you know, keep the same people, always makes it smoother.
Yeah, am I supposed to sign?
It says, this municipality, I'll fill that in, but right under that, there's a line, if you sign it, and I'll put your title in.
Can't tell who signed it anyway.
There you go.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
I need to put her next to you.
The lieutenant came down and last, for this driving high grant that they, this highway safety grant that they're working on, turns out there were two more pages that they need initials at the bottom. I was gonna put them on, but then I felt guilty about it.
And is there me initialing or the whole board?
No, I think.
Everyone needs to initial it, this is what you did last time.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so initial is.
Mine's in the middle.
She was in the middle, I don't know, all right, okay.
Oh, you don't want to shuffle them off just for fun?
No, we don't want to make any confusion. No, 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 don't do that.
And I'll put the date on them.
I, I think it's just fine. Keep them on the top.
Don't be kidding me.
This is why I get in trouble a lot.
That's right.
See, we should just play musical chairs, and each time we sign a document, it's in the order of our city.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Oh, my God.
What happens to Dana?
I'm already tired, right?
You'd really confuse us. We have two manifests this time. It's that because we didn't get one of Emmett's invoices in the computer system before we finalized it, so in order to do that, so that's why we have two. And I also have copies of the bills. For those of you that like to peruse those.
The bill lady.
I don't know, right, right? He says the eye.
My side is.
Right, the line item.
I proofread enough stuff, up to my eyebrows in proofreading today.
That's funny, I sent you a bunch of minutes.
I thank you very much, I wanna appreciate, that was great, 'cause I worked on it over the weekend. I sent you a thank you.
I know you did.
Okay.
Well, you called me at one point, so I thought you were gonna ask for them, but you didn't leave a voicemail.
Galls is the uniform company of the police.
Oh, 'cause you weren't there, because you weren't there, so I couldn't ask you for anything.
So I just said, you know what? Should probably ask him for minutes, so I should send him over.
What place did we get what done for septic services? Was that here?
That, I, the bill would be in there, but it wasn't here, it must've been at the public safety building.
Man of the port-a-potty or is that separate?
Oh, is it Henneka's Septic?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the port-a-potty at the soccer field.
Okay.
Good.
Boy, this guy, he, he reads a raise.
He does.
Occasionally I remember things.
Every now and then he comes in very handy.
But you know what, I'm still waiting for all my nice food.
Well, we're having a couple of elections this year, so you might just get something.
One of them might actually be fairly extended too.
Yeah, that's right.
I made a great dinner tonight, you missed it all.
This is the payroll.
Fairly high attendance to it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I need to sign those as we pass them back.
Look, my name's on that, too. So is yours.
It always feels wrong to sign it when, you know, we're on it, but there's no really other option.
I was gonna say, right, what are you, another choice? Want a big two hundred fifty dollar?
You know, there's, there's a law, I mean, the select board's supposed to approve everything, but we have to pay people within a certain amount of time. So we have two laws on the books that are.
That's right.
Yeah, that are kinda crossing.
We're being nice, we're good. We get along really well a lot.
Then my least favorite bill is the Pitney Bowls, um, postage. And I do it online, they won't let me use a credit card because they don't want me to pay a credit account with a credit card.
Oh, my God.
So that, and I do it because they take a long time to credit you otherwise and you end up paying a fee.
We can't make this stuff up.
No, you can't. It goes to a lockbox somewhere and sits there.
Oh, yes, the wonderful points and postage activity.
Yeah, those points, what a ride.
Well, that postage activity's coming, gonna be a little bit higher tomorrow.
What's gonna be higher?
Oh, I'm sending out a bunch of postcards tomorrow.
Okay, I'll ask this, the question.
Penalty postcards.
Meter hosted overage fee of a dollar fifty.
I didn't bother to check for that, Dave, for a dollar fifty, because it's always on there and I don't know, I don't know what they're talking about.
Oh, it's probably just upset fee and they didn't change, you know. It's the easy way to do it, just, no, 'cause nobody's gonna check, nobody's gonna look at a dollar and a fifty cents.
Well, I probably should.
I just.
I probably should've known, David asked me and I should've known, had a better answer. And I'm not really good at making up lies at the spirit of a moment.
No, you can't do that, 'cause eventually it comes to bite you in the butt.
It's not like my mother, yeah.
That's, that's one, and I've said that to my kids.
It's so true.
And it's easier just to tell the truth.
It's one thing, my oldest son's always really good. I think he's like, yeah, I did, no, no, okay, well, don't do it again.
A what, that page?
Yeah, but then you don't worry.
That's for them, oh, that's for them.
Thank you.
Don't get us mixed up.
That's the bills.
Okay.
The bills.
Do we have anything else?
I do not have anything else for you to sign.
All right. And do we have any motions that we need to take care of or are, or similar?
Uh, no.
All right. Do we have any non-publics?
We do not.
Do we have any further business?
No, we do not, no. You're like this weather, I have to say, this is not bad weather for October.
I move that we close the meeting at eight forty-nine.
Second Dana's running for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dana really wants to get steps in today.